All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 22, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission. I'll call the meeting to order. If you can please rise for the flag salute.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good will of liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on now to the roll call. Chair Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Macaro.
Here.
Commissioner Spear.
Here.
Commissioner Jester.
Here.
Commissioner Stevie.
Here.
Commissioner Correll.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson. Thank you. Moving on now to approval of the minutes for June 24, 2025. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I see have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Correll.
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Jester. If we can have the vote.
Motion to approve the June 24, 2025, meeting minutes.
Chair Wyler.
Yes.
Commissioner Macaro.
Abstain.
Commissioner Spear.
Abstain.
Commissioner Jester.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie.
Yes.
Commissioner Correll.
Yes.
The vote is four to zero to two to approve the June 24, 2025, meeting minutes.
Next item up is any written communications on items not on the agenda tonight?
There are none.
Thank you. Any oral communications on items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings. We'll move forward with item number two, which is PL 22-0010. It's the 2022 General Plan Amendment. And do we have a presentation from staff? And before we go into that, sorry, are there any disclosures? I wouldn't think there would be any, but are there any? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Wyler. My name is Veronica Maronis. I'm our city planner, and I'm joined this evening by our consultant, Brooke Peterson, with Rick, and I'll let Brooke introduce herself.
Brooke Peterson, Director of Planning and Design, with Rick.
And we will go ahead and present on the item before you, which is a request for a general plan amendment to amend the community protection and community health and services elements of the general plan.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. We were here before you in May as a workshop item to walk through the amendments and the associated goals and policies and content, so we are glad to be back in front of you today for action. Our request this evening is to approve the updates to the community protection element and the addition of an environmental justice chapter to the community health and services element of the general plan and the associated CEQA document and addendum to the final impact report. This would be Commission Resolution Number 2025-07. So the actions requested, as I noted, are to adopt the CEQA recommendation to approve the addendum to the 2020-12 General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report in accordance with CEQA Guidelines, Section 15164, and in accordance generally with the California Environmental Quality Act regulations promoted thereunder and the city's environmental review guidelines per Article 47 of the zoning code. And to adopt staff's recommendation to provide a recommendation for approval to City Council for the amendments project. So I wanted to provide some background. I'm going to step through background and then provide a summary of the content of the amendments. I'm going to share some background on the community outreach that was conducted and the timeline for the project. So by way of background, the community protection element and the health and services element was initiated originally kicked off back in 2021 through collaboration across planning, fire, police, and emergency management departments. It was primarily triggered by a number of recent state legislative bills, primarily SB 1035, 379, 99, and AB 747, which were triggered by the update of the 2021-29 housing element. The community health and services element also triggered concurrent updates and was triggered by the update to the housing element and the update to the community protection element. SB, I'm going to go through in a little more detail, but SB 1000 triggers or requires the update to the community protection and housing elements to incorporate environmental justice when two or more elements are updated. So the community health and services element update to include EJ was kicked off in late 2021 as well. There was a background report conducted to support the chapter in August of 2023. That project kind of as a whole, the amendments was put on hold due to staff limitations, and then we picked that back up again last summer, conducted outreach through this kind of late winter, spring, and so we're here before you with final preparation of the amendments. I want to also just note the background and the outreach and communications and discussion that has occurred with you. Prior Planning Commission presentations, we had kind of the kickoff of the amendments, announcement of the update to the elements back in December of 2021. The draft outreach and engagement plan for the project or the process as a whole was brought to you for feedback in February 2022. In July of 2022, the feedback that was received from a bunch of that initial outreach and engagement was brought to you. In January of 2023, we also came back again to report out on the outreach and engagement activities. We received a request for additional feedback and notification of the draft environmental justice background and gave that report in August of 2023. And then we, as I mentioned, as I noted, we were here in May to report out on the additional outreach conducted, as well as give an update and present kind of the draft goals and policies for your feedback. So as I mentioned, there has been quite a number of state legislative bills that have been adopted pertaining to the general plan. The general plan and its content has required and mandated by state law. So recent statewide policies, statewide laws have been enacted that trigger a need to update certain portions of the general plan, primarily the safety element and, as noted, the inclusion of environmental justice. And that was triggered, the implementation and compliance in the elements was triggered by the adoption of that, or the, sorry, the update of the housing element. So to go through those, SB 379 requires cities and counties within California to integrate climate adaptation into their general plans. AB 747 mandates safety elements to address climate and hazard-related evacuation routes. SB 99, also related to evacuation, requires cities to analyze residential development that's at risk of isolation or constraint for evacuation. AB 1409 requires review and update of the safety element to identify evacuation locations that are under a range of emergency scenario, so not just fire, but also flood, also drought, also fire, extreme heat, et cetera. AB 2911 requires safety elements to be reviewed every five years for fire safety and mandates local agencies in fire hazard zones to consult with CAL FIRE. And that consult and review of the safety element, the community protection element that's before you tonight, has been reviewed at length and discussed at length with CAL FIRE. It also was presented to the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection in May and received approval. The update to the community health and services element, as I mentioned, is triggered by SB 1000, which requires local agencies to adopt an environmental justice element or, if not an element, related goals and policies as part of the general plans. That's triggered when two or more elements are addressed and updated. So as noted, the housing element update and then the following community protection element updates triggered the need to integrate environmental justice more comprehensively into the general plan. Environmental justice can be included either as a standalone or by incorporating policies throughout the elements of the general plan or a hybrid. Before you today is a chapter, an environmental justice chapter added to the community health and services as the alternative approach to integrating it into the general plan. The update to the community protection element, in addition to responding and complying with state law, also integrates a number of the city's other key planning and policy documents in order to bring consistency and integration of other city policies and regulations, primarily the city's Climate Action Plan, or ECAP, the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Evacuation and Repopulation Plan, and the city's Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So to step through the community protection element updates or amendments, there's primarily two categories of the updates. One, the first, is the emergency preparedness and evacuation planning. As I noted, when I went through the legislation updates or new requirements, quite a few of them pertain to evacuation planning, identifying constrained or limited residential development, et cetera. So one of the key additions to the community protection element is a new exhibit, a new map, that depicts limited access parcels and residential development, primarily that is limited, have limited access or only one point of evacuation. The goals and policies addition to the community protection element are really across five key categories. There are revisions to all of the goal and policy areas in the community protection, and there's, we have added goals and policies related to climate adaptation and resilience. Related to the updates or amendments to the community protection element, I want to just note, again, SB 1000, which, as I've noted, requires the integration and inclusion of environmental justice. The definition of environmental justice is the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people regardless race, color, national origin, or income with respect to development, implementation and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. So how is this applied? How do we arrive at how this pertains to Escondido? There is a standard mapping tool called CAL ENVIRO SCREEN, which is used to, it brings in a database of many, many different layers of data pertaining to pollution, vulnerabilities to inadequate housing, and all different components of disadvantaged communities. And it then applies, it analyzes all of those data for a community, and then any communities that receive a grade or percentage of 50 or over are designated as disadvantaged communities. The environmental justice communities in Escondido also go through an additional four-step approach, and I'm going to step through those if I can, just to provide sort of the technical basis for identifying the disadvantaged communities in Escondido. So CAL ENVIRO SCREEN is used, as I mentioned, to examine whether the planning area contains census tracts that have a community score of 50% or above. After that, the areas are then mapped, the census tracts are then mapped to identify any tracts that are at or below statewide median income. They're also then mapped to look at areas that are at or below the Department of Housing and Community Development's state incomes, and then that is incorporated into community-specific data that's examined for additional pollution burden. And that is then, the output of that is the environmental justice screen, which identifies the disadvantaged communities. And in Escondido, these are those census tracts that have been identified as disadvantaged communities or environmental justice communities. You can see that they're really central to the city, a little bit west of the 15, and then primarily east of the 15 and generally south of the 78. These correspond very closely to the, what's known as the priority investment neighborhoods that were identified in the ECAP. So just to go over the project analysis of the amendments, general plan, in order to be deemed compliant, the updates need to ensure that there is no net loss of housing. It needs to ensure that any of those updates are consistent and don't create any inconsistencies across the goals and policies or components of the other elements, and also requires that we are consistent with the city's adopted Climate Action Plan. We also analyzed the fiscal impact of the amendments and the approval of the general plan amendments to both of the community protection and community health and services elements would have no immediate fiscal impact on the city's budget. In terms of the environmental analysis conducted governing the amendments and the element updates, the CEQA recommendation is to adopt the addendum for the final environmental impact report that was conducted for the 2012. So we are doing an addendum to that final EIR. Only minor revisions to the EIR were needed for the project, and there's no new significant impacts, and really, there were most areas, there was absolutely no impact. So we prepared the fourth addendum to the final impact report and are consistent with CEQA, its implementing regulation, and, as noted, the city's environmental review guidelines. So the updates to the community health and services element addresses, sorry, six categories. There are two new goals, nine new policies, and then 84 subpolicies that are organized across those six categories, which are to reduce pollution, to increase access to public facilities, access to healthy food, access and opportunity to physical activity, access to safe and sanitary homes, and to improve civic engagement opportunities and access. I want to go through the outreach that was conducted primarily for the environmental justice component and those new goals, policies, and subpolicies I just noted. At the outset of the project, really, in implementation of the community outreach and engagement plan, there was extensive outreach done between November 2021 and September 2022. As you can see on the screen, there were over 10 virtual and in-person meetings held, a webpage, significant number of stakeholder and community groups were involved. Spanish translation was available at all of those events. The original draft engagement plan was presented, as I noted to you, in February 22, and then public input was received and incorporated and informed the preparation of the element. After the pause, when we initiated last summer, we took in all of that outreach and all of that input, all of the feedback that had been obtained, and that really informed where we went with the draft element that's before you today. As noted, there was over 330 people engaged to develop and arrive at the element in front of you today. In addition to the outreach conducted in 2122, we did again conduct some outreach. We had a community workshop in May and a stakeholder workshop, sorry, March, and a stakeholder workshop in April. Those were in person with Spanish translation available, and we had approximately 20 across those. And it gave an opportunity for members to again interact and comment and provide feedback on the goals and policies across both elements. Just to summarize the feedback we received at those two workshops, there was widespread support of the new goals and policies, an ask and a desire for continued community outreach and education as those are adopted and as the city looks to implement those. So there was support for community protection policies, really a lot of focus on proactive and prevention-based fire planning, disaster and climate risk components. There was an emphasis in their comments on the equity and transparency in decision-making and the goals and policies related to civic engagement, and we received over 50 comment letters and emails overall. So in conclusion, again, the request before you is to approve the updates to the community protection element, the addition of the environmental justice chapter to the community health and services element, and the addendum to the final impact report. We received only two written public comments that were in support of the item and one oral comment at the June meeting, June 24 meeting. In conclusion, per Government Code 65103, this commission must review the proposed updates to the 2012 elements and recommend action to City Council, and we ask that you approve staff's recommendation to provide that recommendation to council and approve Planning Commission Resolution 2025-07. With that, I'll turn it over to questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And certainly, I think I speak for all of us. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys have gone through over the last, gosh, now, several years. A lot of public outreach, which was really good, so thank you. Before we move on to questions of staff, I would kind of like to have any public testimony at this point, and then we'll go into questions, if we could. So do we have any speakers that wish to address the Planning Commission?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, then we can go ahead and move on to questions of staff. Who wants to go first? Oh, and let me preface this, because I want to make sure that everybody's questions get answered here. This goes off the City Council. It's our recommendation, including the wording for the various goals and policies. So make sure that you get your questions answered, but also if there's any desired wording changes to the policies or the goals, let's make sure that we address each one of those. And I believe staff can bring up whatever policy. We can all look at it. If there's a wording change, make your suggestion, we can discuss it. And if we come to a consensus of yes, that should be changed, we'll do that kind of by hand vote. And then we will include that as a part of the ultimate motion towards final approval of the resolution. Does that sound good? All right. Questions of staff? Terrific. Good. All right, then.
I've got some questions, but it looks like there might be a comment.
Okay. We'll go ahead, and if you could just state your name, and you got three minutes.
My name is Greg Oliver, and I'm with the Escondido Fire Safe Council. The reason I'm here is because we just talked about where the disadvantaged communities are located, and that was east of the 15 and south of the 78, is what I think we said. Usually disadvantaged communities are located in the outskirts of town. Saying that as a general rule. If that's where our disadvantaged community is, then so be it. The fire risk map that came out this year shows that the greatest fire risk for wildfire is located at the outskirts of town, almost all the way around. And I just want to...
I don't think your microphone is on.
Is my microphone on?
No.
Okay.
And it's purely so, because this gets recorded, we want to make sure your comments get clearly on the record.
Thank you. Am I okay now? My name is Greg Oliver. I'm with the Escondido Fire Safe Council. The reason I'm here is because the findings of the commission, or the committee, was that the disadvantaged communities are in the, just about the central area of town. My concern is for the disadvantaged that are in the outskirts of town, because that's where the very highest fire risk is in the area. And it's a selfish desire, because our Fire Safe Council's job is to help those people in the high-fire-risk areas, and we're very concerned about helping the disadvantaged. The interior of the town doesn't seem to, seems to have the disadvantaged neighborhoods without the great fire risk. So I just, I just wanted to come to understand whether or not there was, there is a disadvantaged population at the outskirts of town or not. That was my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Before moving on, if we could have staff respond.
Yes, thank you. So to clarify, we have two different chapters of our general plan proposed for amendments this evening as a part of the greater work effort, that is, the 2022 General Plan Amendment. One is the Community Protection Chapter, which we sometimes refer to as our safety element, because that's what state law refers to it as. We just gave it a nice name. And the other is the Community Health and Services Chapter. The disadvantaged communities are specific and applicable to the components of Senate Bill 1000, which have to do with environmental justice as a topic. There is guidance from the state, from the, formerly the office, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, now called the Land Use and Climate Innovation Center? Yep. They changed their name recently. And they give guidance on how to identify a methodology of how to identify disadvantaged communities, and it entails much more than just fire risk. The safety element, the Community Protection Chapter that we're amending as well, does specifically speak to fire risk, does identify our very high, high, and moderate fire hazard severity zones. It incorporates those state maps by reference, because they are supposed to be updated annually, and so we don't want to amend our general plan annually for just those maps. So we do incorporate them by reference, but that is the difference as to why disadvantaged communities under Senate Bill 1000 appear to be concentrated in the center of the city is because they look at far more than just fire hazard versus the acknowledgement of fire hazards through the actual state mapping process that CAL FIRE and the Fire Marshal's Office does.
So essentially, at least for Escondido, on the outskirts where there may be that high-fire risk, there, it doesn't reach the level of being considered the EJC?
Correct.
Okay.
But the new, I'll just add that the new exhibit, the new map added to this community protection element is related to those areas with limited access, not as pertains to the environmental justice and health and services element.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Stevie, you had some questions?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Very, very much appreciated. I have three questions. The first one is, are there any items in this update that go beyond the scope of what is required by California state law? I was not able to identify any, but I'm curious to know if there are.
So as it pertains to the safety element, the Community Protection Chapter update, that is mandate compliance with state law. So Government Code 65302G, which stipulates what is required of safety elements as of today, line item by line item, and close, working closely with our fire department, our police department, our emergency manager, and CAL FIRE to ensure that compliance, as well as the state geological survey. As you'll know, there are new seismic maps in there. For the environmental justice component of the community health and services, there are four requirements under state law, that you identify disadvantaged communities, that you address six topical areas at minimum, of which are the six we presented on, and that you incorporate it either through the element or through policy language interspersed throughout. There is a strong emphasis that it be community-driven, which is why there was such a robust community engagement effort, and the policies, the subpolicies, and the goals that are before you in that community health and services chapter are purely driven by the input we received through both community outreach events, tabling events, specific workshops, over the 50-plus comment letters we received throughout the three and a half years we've been working on this project, as well as talking with subject matter experts, a number, we have a number of very qualified individuals within the city who work in various sectors, who requested meetings with staff to discuss their purview on topics such as housing safety, community engagement, talking with interested parties, such as the Compact, who you may be familiar with, who does a lot of outreach and engagement throughout the city to better understand. So that's where those... So that's where those policies are driven from. There is not a specific line item in government code that says you have to have a policy that addresses Policy 1.1.1, but they are born out of all the engagement that state law does mandate we do.
Okay. My second question is, if a community is identified as an environmental justice community, what are the implications of this for the following groups? City staff, and I'm specifically concerned about the fact that city staff are currently significantly resource-constrained, especially with respect to getting anything through the permitting process. This is regularly a concern expressed to myself and other commissioners by developers and people trying to do projects in the city. So I'm curious to know if there's an impact on that side. The Planning Commission's ability to decide on any projects in those regions, as you know, periodically, we are presented with an opportunity to decide on a development, but are constrained in our decision-making by some sort of policy or state or local policy. And so I'm wondering if that expands. Any spending priorities here we have in the city, does this re-architect our spending priorities? And then developers in the area, anyone who would want to develop, are they going to have to conduct additional studies? Are they going to have to prepare any additional disclosures? Anything along those lines that would add burden to their ability to develop here in the city? And then finally, the homeowners in the area, if they want to, say, do any kind of improvement on their property, or if they just have their property, are they going to be required to do some sort of, you know, improvements to reduce pollution or to make the, you know, their properties more resistant to fire, et cetera?
All great questions. I will go through them one at a time. The implications for identified environmental justice communities. So the implications are potential advantages in funding, being able to identify communities in need where funding pots may be available, specific to such communities and needs. We've already seen some of that through our Climate Action Plan, seeing as how Senate Bill 1000 is a state-mandated piece of legislation. There is the, the hope, the potential, that funding would come about that we could access as a result of having a compliant environmental justice component of our general plan.
State, federal?
State funding.
Okay.
As far as resource constraints for private development, the effort and the goal of the policies surrounding the updated Community Health and Services Chapter was not to impede or make more onerous private development in any way, shape, or form. It was to, it is to remedy any potential policy that may have caused a larger amount of aggregation of pollution or things such as park deficits within the city over time. So a lot of the policies are actually for long-range planning staff to consider or evaluate at a future point in time, through the seven-cycle housing element, when we're adopting future specific plans, considerations. I will say that the policies have a, I will refer generally to the goals, policies, and subpolicies as just policies for simplicity's sake, have two general buckets, one that is more suggestive, recommended. So you'll see words like encourage, consider, something of that nature. Those are not mandatory. They are direction. So at a future point, when a project is underway, a program is underway by the Development Services Department or other facets of the city, other departments, they would look to that policy and say, okay, is this policy applicable to this program or project? If it is, we need to consider this as a part of our ideation in creating potential programmatic efforts. They may not be applicable. It may not be feasible. It's consider, it's encourage, it's not a shall, it's not a require, it's not a mandate. The other component does have more strong language, require, assess, right? These are active actions that are being directed at a future point, and those were very specific to future planning actions related to the seven-cycle housing element, as it pertains to ensuring we conduct that analysis or we consider that analysis as part of that larger As it pertains to Planning Commission's ability to decide on future projects, staff as a part of our role in reviewing projects, review for compliance against the general plan. So we would be looking at these policies the same way we look at any of the other general plan policies, but none of them were written in a way to try and impede or impair development. In fact, under state housing law, we cannot impede housing development, even if those policies may seem like they are not impeding housing. If they are actually found to impede housing, it is in violation of state housing laws. So we are very cautious about impeding development generally as a result of that. Spending priority changes. There are considerations in evaluating environmental justice communities, priority investment neighborhoods, when we assess for programming funding. That is already adopted in our Climate Action Plan, so there are adopted policies in the ECAP that say we should be prioritizing private, priority investment neighborhoods. We're carrying that, mirroring that language over for environmental justice communities. Again, it's a consider, evaluate for, not a you shall. There are no policies that require mandatory studies by developers to facilitate projects. We would look to California Environmental Quality Act or other existing general plan policies, such as fiscal impact analyses, if they're triggering that under the zoning code. And then, again, impediments or hoops, so to speak, that would impact homeowners, that is absolutely the antithesis of these policies as far as health and safety goes, especially on the safety element side of things. A lot of the policy language for the safety element is either directly from our fire department in an effort to ensure developers can access things like homeowners' insurance for their projects, either aligned with existing fire code standards that are in effect, such as Assembly Bill 38, which is a requirement for defensible space that our fire department enforces and reviews for. So it's really bringing alignment to things that are already happening.
Okay. So some subsection of these policies go into the shall bucket, and some subsection goes into the may bucket. But overall, the consideration burden is increased, though hopefully in a way that is in alignment with current state law and requirements around fire safety, et cetera. Is that a fair summary?
Very concise and succinct.
Okay. So the consideration bucket is primarily handled at the city staff level, specifically probably fire and planning. Is that correct?
It would expand beyond fire and planning. It could impact our engineering divisions, our utility divisions, community services as far as parks and recreation.
Okay. And so as that consideration set increases, do we expect the time, the turnaround time for applications to increase?
Not for private development, because most of this will impact city projects, such as capital improvement considerations, but even then I would expect it to be minor. Verbal conversations during project kickoff, verbal conversations with consultants who are helping with design. It would be during the budgeting process, so division managers, department managers would have theoretically considerations of where are we allocating funding for those types of projects? And they would all be recommend, based on recommendations that ultimately are decided on by the City Council.
Okay. And do any of these considerations make their way into any sort of database or toolset that the city uses in its current operations? For example, at some point in time, the consideration set will expand to such a degree that no single human is going to be able to contain them all in their highly skilled minds. And so I'm wondering where this makes its way into the operational infrastructure and workflows for you all.
Yes, that's a really fantastic question, and the straightforward answer is that city employees should be very familiar with our general plan. That is the guiding document for the city, and if there is one document that every planner is made to read, it's our general plan upon their starting.
Okay.
And that is something that is being promulgated more and more throughout city departments and staff of, this is the document that guides development and guides direction of the city, even beyond just development.
Sure.
So...
Yeah, I mean, I use AI to read the plan, but I'm curious. That's a, that's a separate discussion. All right. My final question for you then is, with respect to the safety element, there's a designation in there called the significant hazard designation, yes? This is a significant hazard for fire specifically?
Do you have a page number I can reference briefly?
Let me see if I can find it. So this is in the section about the CEQA, discussing CEQA, the update to the safety element. The discussion is around the new fire hazard zones, evacuation limitations, or the climate risks. And there's a question of whether or not a, an area is a significant hazard for fire reasons. And my question around that is, maybe you're going to have to get back to me on this. One, who determines what is a significant hazard? And then, two, how does this designation impact current homeowners, developers, again, city resources? My overarching concern, if it's not clear, is that it appears that these amendments, while targeting compliance and alignment with state law, are sufficiently vague as to mean anything or nothing. And if it means anything, but it's sort of determined upon, it's determined out of line of sight of the public by city staff who get to take very broadly-written language and use it to whatever effect is internally decided is a priority, I'm concerned that that might have unforeseen implications on developers, homeowners, our ability to move quickly in getting projects approved and through the permitting process here in the city.
Sorry, if I can, just ask for clarification. So your question is, if an area is noted as having a significant, well, first, what is the definition of a significant hazard? Where does that come from? And then, if an area is noted or identified as significant hazard, is that going to have some implications on the homeowners in that respective area?
Yeah. Any, any, I would call it any stakeholder in the area, and it would, it's a sort of waterfall question. So the first is, what does it mean? Second is, who determines it? And then, third, what are the implications?
So significant hazard is in the environment, in the addendum. It's one of the criterion used in CEQA language as a threshold of significance. So we evaluated, yes, the additional, or the amendments, the 2022 amendments against those thresholds. Significant hazard, as it pertains to fire, primarily, what the analysis for that was primarily relied upon, the state fire hazard severity maps. Does that answer your question in terms of...
So it's determined at the state level?
Yes.
Okay. And then, once you have that fire map determined and that significant hazard determined, what does that then mean for this city in terms of resource allocation, decision-making, any kind of approvals process for permitting and development?
That would really be a question that our fire department would be best suited to answer, who is not here this evening, and I apologize for that. I'm happy to give follow-up, get follow-up from our fire chief on that, as he would be the best person equipped to answer that question. And we can get that to you as soon as possible.
But from a planning perspective, this isn't something that is really registered as an impediment to development?
It's registered as something that is not within the control of the city's ability to go beyond the state or deviate from the state. The state has dictated fire hazard severity zones through these maps. They were just adopted by council a few weeks ago, and that sets the stage for all sorts of implications, including insurance requirements, building code requirements, fire code requirements, of which both fire and building code updates are forthcoming as of January 1. There will be updated code requirements that I'm sure will reflect those updated maps. We really get in line, because we are not, as a jurisdiction, allowed to go beyond the purview of those maps.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to just step in and follow up on that question. So the, the state kind of sets the, the threshold, so to speak, that we can't go beyond, but by the time it gets through the fire code, police, or I'm sorry, building code, the local building official and the fire marshal have the ability to interpret those codes to make sure that we're not running into overreach, so to speak?
I will, yes, I would defer to them ultimately, but they have the authority to implement and interpret those codes, similar to how the director and myself interpret the zoning code.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Spear?
Thank you, and thank you for your, your presentation. And for my, the comments of my colleagues, I did also want to follow up on one of those And that's with regard to, what you stated regarding the intent of this was to provide guidelines or framework and not lock things in. And, and I think that's, that has important advantages. As I look through the policies and how that may or may not, you know, as I try to look at these policies and say, well, does it do that? To a large extent, I look at it, and it appears to do that quite well. I, I look, though, for example, at Health and Wellness Policy 1.7, and I just tried to read that in devil's advocate way and say, well, look, it says, continue to provide city parks and recreation programs. That one is maybe a little more specific. Could that be interpreted to mean, look, if, if the city wants to discontinue a program that they wouldn't be able to do so? And, and have a fiscal impact that they can't avoid based on this language?
I'm looking for 1.7, and I see a different policy. Are you able to point to a page number?
Yeah, let me look. I'm looking at page 156.
156 of the agenda packet?
Um, pardon me. Yes.
Yes. Health and wellness, so thank you for that question. Appreciate the clarification. Health and wellness policy 1.7 is an already adopted standard. We are not proposing any changes. That's an existing general plan policy. So I would say no, because I'm sure recreation programs wax and wane based on demand.
That's the intent, is that they not get locked into anything, they be able to make those choices?
Correct. This is meant as broad sweeping policy direction to help guide decision-making at the local level for staff.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Juster?
Thank you for the presentation. It was very good. I do have a couple of clarifications, if I, if I may, and forgive me, forgive my ignorance on this, but I'm looking at Table 1, Safety Element Compliance. It seems to me that under AB 747 and SB 99 and several other of these, we've created a new document in the draft, under Attachment 3, VI 8 on both of those two. I'm a little confused when I read AB 2911, that requires the safety element to be reviewed every five years. Are we six years behind the curve in these updates, and is that a result of the staffing issues in 2022?
It's a great question. So the Government Code 65302-G, which dictates the requirements of the safety element, sets forth a series of if-then statements based on date and document updates. So if two or more elements, or if the, excuse me, if the housing element is updated after 20, 20, what, I think it was 2019 or 2020, then you must update the safety element. For the five-year cycle, I believe that, that, well, let me confer with Brooke for one moment. So that component of 65302 became effective with the subsequent update. So the way that that government code reads is, as of 2018, when, upon the next housing element update, which wasn't slotted until the sixth cycle, starting in 2021. So they, they had a three-year, discrepancy is not the right word, but they approved it in 2018, but the next housing element cycle wasn't until 2021. So that kicked off our five-year timeline now, as of 2021.
Okay, thanks for... Okay, thanks, Veronica. I appreciate that. It's all coming back right now. I had one other question with regard to the physical analysis. It says that due to the nature of the long-range planning programs such as the 2022 General Plan Amendment, the needs for funding have not been specifically identified at this time. So that suggests that it, there is an anticipated cost. And it says that the voting on our resolution today has no immediate physical impact on the city budget. When you say immediate, is that this year and next year, or, and the next year after? Or when will it affect the city budget?
So I think at this point in time, it's speculative for us to say when it will affect the city budget. Ultimately-
Take a guess.
My guess is that the next housing element cycle, which would start in 2029, and we would be looking at kicking that off sometime in the next one to two years, where we would then be implementing analysis and research to update our housing element, of which some of the environmental, the Community Health and Services Chapter updates would encourage us or require us to do certain assessments, and so that would go into that component of that project.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Any other questions? All right. I, I don't actually have any specific questions. However, I do have some recommendations for some wording changes. And if we could, I'd like to propose those wording changes to some of the policies at, right now, and unless we get other input from our planning commissioners. The changes that I have are in Attachment 4, which is the Community Health and Services element. If you could bring that up. And my first change would be on Page E20. And are those gonna come up on our screen?
Angel, are we able to get this up on our screens, the, what we're having on our Yes, this PC up on the larger screen?
So, and, and again, this kind of goes in what I had outlined before, which is, just by hand vote, if you want to make the change or not make the change, or have other suggestions, then we'll just go ahead and have that discussion and make those recommendations. So the change that I had was actually in the first, I'm sorry, yeah, in the first sentence here, under introduction, it's, "The environmental justice is a movement aimed to address and improve wellness and equitable treatment across communities." And then I looked down at the definition of environmental justice as the fair treatment and meaningful participation. So my suggested change, and it's not much, but it would be to change the word equitable to fair. And that would be the last word on the first line there. So it would, and the change would be, aim to address and improve wellness and fair treatment across communities, which seems to be more in line with the actual definition.
I support that change. I think that that is clearer as to the intent.
Okay. Any other discussion or any change? Anybody? Go ahead, Commissioner Jester.
I think that the, the word equitable also implies impartiality. I don't know if that's much different from fair, but it does apply another dimension.
So, in, in, in political speak, I'm concerned that the word equitable also implies a sort of equality of outcome, which then has a weight, maybe a determining weight, that we don't intend. Whereas, it seems like the word fair is designed to, to instruct us to listen and hear and attend to, but it doesn't have the same sort of outcome orientation.
Well, I, and I, I agree with that 100%, except for the context would dictate that the word equitable, fair is relative. What's fair to some person might not be fair to the other person. When it's impartial, as equitable, a part of the definition of equitable, I think it's
The purpose is to make sure there's consistency between the wording that we're using and the definition is provided by the state. That's the purpose of my recommended change.
Can you, can you help us by maybe parsing out the difference between fair and equitable as you see it?
Both of my fellow commissioners did that very well, which is appreciated. However, what I'm looking for is consistency between the wording that we're using and the wording that the state's using, and trying to make sure we stay consistent. That was the purpose of the change.
The state is clearly wrong. We're right.
There's a different argument.
Yeah, consistency is, is good, and I would agree with you on that.
Does anybody not want to change?
I don't mind the change, but I do agree with Commissioner Jester that the word equitable does have, I think, a more current, recognized meaning in today's world that is more dimensional and farther reaching. I prefer the word equitable, but I understand the consistency note.
I have a comment. I don't know that the nuances of how we as commissioners interpret a word is gonna matter. I'm in favor of making it consistent with the official definition. It's a policy document.
Let's go this way. Who wants to change? We got four. So if we can include that as a change that the commission, a majority of the commission would like to see. Moving on to Page E41, which is Policy 1.1.1. And it's this minimum efficiency reporting value. So this goes back to a question that Commissioner Stevie had brought up, which is, are there any policies here that are going beyond state requirements, either from, it's not OPR, but state law and the building code? This one struck me as one of those that might be going beyond. So I have a concern with it, but if we can get that question answered, possibly, and then I do have a wording change.
So Policy 1.1.1 would direct staff to create a zoning ordinance surrounding a MERV requirement for development within 500 feet of the I-15 or SR-78. So that would be establishing a minimum standard of interior air filtration for housing developments that are within 500 feet of a freeway. And that would be above building code requirement.
Okay. So that was one that I picked up on that, as a part of your questioning, Commissioner Stevie. I didn't really pick up on any others, but I did pick up on that one that, that I thought. The only change that I was looking for is right at the very, very beginning, which where it says, update the zoning ordinance. My thought was to consider updating the zoning ordinance. So the very first sentence. So it, it says here, update the zoning ordinance to require, and then the rest of it. So, in my mind, that's almost a mandate. In keeping with what we were trying to accomplish here, which was, consider, encourage, those sort of things. That's why I thought at this point, it's one of those where consider should be placed at the beginning of this policy. Commissioner Spear has a question.
If this goes above and beyond the requirements at a state level, my question is, why are we seeking to implement this as a, at all? Where is this coming from?
Yes, so that's a great question. This was a direct comment from a, the Escondido Community Housing Coalition. So we received a public comment letter, both as part of the sixth cycle housing element update. There was a lot of public input regarding evaluating the siting of housing within 500, actually, I think 1,000 feet of the freeways. In reviewing kind of current literature, 500 feet seemed like a more apparent distance. That comment was also provided as part of the environmental justice element, so it's in direct response to public input.
What's the scrutiny on the science behind its efficacy? This policy's efficacy? I, I understand it was, is a request that was made, but was there any, any scrutiny or science applied to whether this is even effective?
So staff is not air quality management experts. However, we do do document review to determine whether standards are being implemented in other jurisdictions. In review, there were other jurisdictions. City of Anaheim has a similar policy in place for housing development within proximity to their freeways for new housing development for air quality purposes. So it did seem in line with contemporary standards that jurisdictions were implementing. It's also a common measure we see in the California Environmental Quality Act when it comes to air quality and health risk assessments for residential developments within areas that have potential higher risk of air pollution. So that is the document review component that we conducted more qualitatively than quantitatively.
Okay. So in essence, it's, other people have done it. Okay. I, I would, I would agree with the push to not have this a requirement, and I would suggest possibly more, maybe stronger language to remove the requirement portion of this than maybe what you were suggesting. I, I don't really want to see this as a requirement, because it's above and beyond, and I'm not convinced it's even effective, even if other folks have done it. And it would put, we're talking about burdens, impacts on development.
You know, Stan, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Jester?
I am in favor of this. My house is about 1,200 feet from the 15 freeway, and there's a tremendous amount of pollution that comes from the freeway.
So I would, I would suggest, from a scientific standpoint, that only works if you only breathe conditioned air, not if you open the window.
I'd like to open my window once in a while.
Right, what I'm saying is, if you open your window, your filter's not gonna help you.
True.
So, the efficacy of this, in, in terms of what the goal is, is a question mark in my mind.
Right. The MERV is ventilation.
What's that?
That's what the MERV is, ventilation efficiency.
But we're talking about- Requiring folks, developers, to put in filtering systems. Whether or not that actually accomplishes the goal is a question in my mind.
Do, it looks to me, unless I'm reading this wrong, that we're talking about the quality of the air filter that they're placing inside the HVAC system. Is that correct?
That, that would be true.
A MERV 20 air filter for my house is $14.
Yeah.
So why are we worried about this? We're talking about the air filter, not the system, the filter. That's not something that we should be worried about, saying consider or not consider. For $14, we should be going along with this, because I think it's better for whoever lives in that house. We're not talking about thousands of dollars. There's a difference between a $8 filter and a $14 filter.
Except for the system cost. My system costs $25,000.
Correct, but the system isn't what they're saying. They're saying the filter. Right? That's what I'm reading. Filters in the ventilation system. That filter is what we replace.
Yeah, you gotta have a system in order to have a filter.
Correct. But I don't think, I don't think they're doing many housing communities in Escondido that don't have a system.
The point of my comment is, we're looking at a mandate, and that's what this is. That's how this reads, in keeping with what we're trying to do, which is not create mandates. You know, that can come out of the zoning code, or the update to the zoning ordinance, where somebody is spending the necessary time beyond what we're doing here to create that mandate, or not. I don't think it's our job right here, right now, to create this mandate. That's why I wanted to add the word, consider updating the zoning code. That way, it's a consideration based on all the things that you had mentioned, Commissioner Correll, which is cost, and how that may or may not impact developers in the fusion, or, in the future, or homeowners. Because it says here that, includes standards to ensure long-term maintenance and replacement of the filters in the individual units. How in the world are we ever going to actually enforce that in the zoning code, other than the first time that those filters are put in? So the issue here is, we're, we're getting too far into something which I don't think this, that we should be doing at this point. I think it should be just consider, and there's a suggestion that can be done when city staff is really looking at changes to the zoning code, which are mandates. That's the purpose of, of my suggested change. You know, I think, if, if you don't want to do it, then you say, nope, no change. If you want to change it, then yes.
So it's all mandatory discretion?
Well, no, today, it's a mandate. That's what's, how I read this. I think the timing is inappropriate.
Do you want to make a discretion, Eric, for the apple?
No. I want this to be considered as part of a, to potentially be considered as part of a zoning ordinance change at some point in the future. That's how this reads. But we're, essentially, it's, yeah, it's kicking it down to where staff can look at this in a very focused way.
If I may interject, it has been brought to my attention that Assembly Bill 130, which went into effect on July 1 of 2025, so 21 days ago, as part of the budget adoption by the state, will now require, does now require, because it went into effect the next day, MERV requirements of 16 or greater for all housing developments within 500 feet of a freeway. So this would be more restrictive than that requirement, which is now in effect as of 21 days ago.
And I'm sorry, how many feet?
500 feet.
Okay. So essentially, this is coming from the, as of today, or 21 days ago, this is coming from the state.
The difference is that she's saying that the requirement is 16, and this is 20, so this is slightly more, right?
Correct.
Then my, my suggestion changes on the wording that we make it consistent with whatever the state requirement is.
Understood.
Any objection?
Can I get a moment there?
Still on this page, Policy 1.1.2. Again, it, you know what? I just want to make sure that the wording does stay consistent with whatever state requirements. I had a wording change, but, because of the new state law, just as long as this is consistent. Moving on to Page E42, Policy- Moving on to page E42, Policy 1.1, 1.1.5. No, I'm good with that one. That's fine.
Can I get that? What was that? That was an assembly bill? What, what number was that?
130.
That was a AB or SB?
AB.
I, I actually have a question about that, now that I'm looking at it. Is, is sitting misspelled?
Is what misspelled?
Isn't sitting two, doesn't it have two Ts? Am I totally dumb? Did I just go on the record as being an idiot?
Siting.
Oh, that's a siting. Oh, I thought you meant like a bus stop where people sit. Got it. Okay. Congratulations to me.
Moving on to Policy, actually, 1.2.1. And maybe this is, this is more of a question for the city engineer. It talks about a criterion. Let's see here. 1.2.1. Yeah, here it is. It says, "In alignment with the Escondido Climate Action Plan, utilizing EJ communities and priority investment neighborhoods as a criterion for prioritizing capital improvements and program investment." What, what's the criterion that's, that's used, or that this is referencing? And the reason be for Mr. Tunnel is just for capital improvements?
Yeah, I don't.
And essentially, is, is there a list that you kind of go by as a, as a part of the criterion to, and maybe it's just?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have the answer to your first question, and on the second, I would say there's, you know, there's different buckets, and they all have their own criteria.
All right. That's probably getting a little too far in the weeds anyways. I don't have any changes on that one. And then one more for you, Mr. Tunnel, which would be, what's, what's the, if you can give a quick overview of the Comprehensive Active Transportation Strategy, or the CATS? And, and just real quick.
Yeah, so the, the, the CATS program was kicked off in, I think, actually, in July of 2023, and we are wrapping up the actual study portion of it, probably by the end of this year. And, yeah, I mean, it, it, you know, it's looked at, it, it also includes our, our mobility, mobility element. We look at that. We've looked at.
So this is something that, that the engineering department's been working on, as far as potential changes to the mobility element, or just an additional report on multimodal, you know, way people get?
Yeah, it's, it's both. It's both. And it's also, you know, there's a big component of it is just, you know, outreach and having, you know, citizens and, and community groups, you know, provide input on mobility needs in the city and identifying missing links in sidewalks, miss, it's, it's also in our mobility element will, is looking at the, you know, the use of our public right of ways and, you know, maybe allocating in places, you know, more air, more, more width to bike lanes and things like that, and taking away from the, what we originally probably thought were a need for more traffic lanes.
Okay. And, and is, is this going to come back to, is this, when this study or whatever program this ends up becoming, does that come back to Planning Commission for a review?
Since it includes a general plan amendment to the mobility element, it will come before the Planning Commission. The CATS has an intersection to the Community Health and Services Chapter because it promotes physical activity by providing those things that Owen spoke about, such as missing links that would hopefully encourage people to walk or bike and promote that physical activity component, which is why it's talked about in these draft policies.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
The only, I was going to add, just that it, it also provides kind of a safety, you know, there's a safety element that's being looked at, so.
Okay. Any, any questions for, for staff on that particular item? Okay, good. Moving on to page E43, Policy 1.2.12, right down at the bottom. It's the second sentence, that it says, "require zoning regulations, provide adequate distance and so forth." I think we should change required to consider. Any objection? Okay, so that'll be one of the items that will be in the final motion. I only have three more. Page E44, Policy 1.3.3. E44? Yeah, I think that's, 1.3.3. Development, implement training and so forth. You know, I'm, I'm a fan of implementing training and, and those sort of improving staff's ability to do things, but I'm also concerned with funding. So I want to make sure that we can have this policy, but at the end of it, I would like to have if funding is available. Any objection? I can go with when. When funding is available? All right. If we can add that one to the final motion. Page E46. Policy 1.5.6. So right at the beginning, again, this is, instead of establish restrictions, consider establishing restrictions. Any objection? We can add that. And the final one? Nope. That was my final change. I just had a question and, and I had that question already answered. So that was really all of my questions and changes that I would like to see. Based on that, any other questions or recommended changes by the Planning Commission? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing portion and open it up for discussion or a motion. Any discussion? I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve resolution, and bear with me here, I had it written down. Come on. There we go. I recommend approval of, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-07 with the modifications as discussed by the Planning Commissioners.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Spear. If we can get the vote.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-07 with modi, with modifications discussed by the Planning Commission. Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
Commissioner Jester?
Approve.
Commissioner Stevie?
Approve.
Commissioner Correll?
Yes.
The vote is six to zero to approve the, to approve Resolution 2025-07 with modifications as discussed by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for a job well done. I know it's been a long, long road to get here. You got one more hearing to go. So good luck, and, and again, thank you for all the efforts. Much appreciated. We'll move on to current business. On the agenda has the downtown specific plan retail corridor discussion. I think we really wanted that at the end of August, beginning of September. So we'll just re-agendize that at the appropriate time, if we could. So I don't think we need to vote on that. Future agenda items? Anything else that Planning Commission would like to put on the agenda? Seeing none? Any new oral communications?
Not this time.
None? Selection of the chair and vice chair? We will get to that as soon as we have a full commission. So maybe the next meeting. And Planning Commissioners report? Any reports from the Planning Commissioners? Seeing none? City planners report? Tentative future agenda?
Yes. So we will be most likely canceling the next meeting, which I believe is 8/12, but we do anticipate having an August 26 meeting where we will most likely re-agendize the downtown specific plan discussion item, and mostly, and we will have the Climate Action Plan Annual Progress Report.
All right.
Can I just weigh in on that for a second?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I'm anticipating that we won't be ready to present even at that meeting.
So I will reach out to Commissioner Stevie to get a firm date for the agenda.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I, you know, I'd hate for us to come in just basically for that, so.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. With that, this meeting is adjourned.